Do you want me to, you wanna call into my cellphone?
Well, yeah, I was either gonna do you or Don.
Okay.
If I, if I had any comments, otherwise I could just listen on the line here with the livestream.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, I can do that, yeah, call one of our phones, yeah.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll just call in, I'll probably, Don Carlson, is that yours?
Yeah, fifty cents a minute, normally.
Okay, Don, Tyler, you got yours going?
I charge seventy-five.
Well, if I got any comments, I'll just, I'll just call.
How you calling this, listening to that?
You can just text us. No, you can call, you can-
I'll hang up about nine twenty-five or nine thirty, somewhere something like that.
Yeah. No, if you wanna call my cellphone, that's fine.
Okay.
Either or, it's either or, or I don't know.
Whatever.
Maybe you'd have to figure out how to put mine on.
Yeah, I can buy one for mine, I can put this through my hearing aids, is that working, buddy?
No.
No, it works for me.
Dan, as I did review my notes back and I had three different documents, the old, old one, and then as we were progressing on, and it was in there under highway commercial, general warehousing and storage. But when we did the new one, it didn't get in there, all three documents showed it was there.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm glad you didn't search that, that was a textbook. While we're on that subject too, if anybody goes down there to view that property, which I did too, last week, that gentleman has a surveillance camera that works, 'cause he called me back. I had a conversation with him, I told him I'd go down with the property over, he called me back and he said, "Were you there?" He says, "Yes, I was," oh, okay, so I hung up.
Good. Yeah, I know where it's at, at least.
Any changes or additions on the matter?
The only thing I saw on the minutes, and it's just the title, undershare, third sentence, Apple discussed Brooklyn's county administrator, had, had turned, it's all one word, so I, no way to think. And then second issue is being, we need to add to the agenda the application for medical assistance. That's all I have.
Motion to approve, motion by Don, text by Tom, Tom favorite.
Bye.
What you got?
I'm gonna let you guys get through anything else you needed to me right away. I don't believe I have much of anything this morning, I did receive a letter this morning on a tax appeal. I stopped by and talked to Sherry, we're gonna be looking into it, just to see where we're at and why the appeal's coming, but it's very early, obviously, the notice has just went out. So, that'll become within, you know, the next month, figure out where we're at.
Don't they first have to appeal it to the local townships and then?
The-
Our city, where?
Yeah.
It's a city one, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a county one, so I-
But it's towards the-
Yeah, usually in that-
Over town support first.
Right.
I've had Miller Marks or something like that, it means they're-
Right, I'm just saying, I got the letter today, so.
Obviously, maybe you should just be advising them that they need to contact their local township and appeal it to the township.
They've, they've hired Gordon, so.
Oh.
So, they, I'm, I'm thinking they-
It's in a process group too, I suppose.
Right, yeah. Just wanted to let you guys know about that. Sherry called last week, asking if they got the, been to the filing department for her office, I informed them they did. I believe they called, they got the purchase order. We're not getting those now. I think that's it from my end, you guys got anything for me? All right. Thank you.
We're complete.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, how are we taking this, yeah?
We saw Tom two in the part on paper, it's additional time to reduce.
Where's that at?
Um, you?
Is that on the front two? Are, are, what do you do?
Ten well needs assisted, four hundred sixty-eight, I tried to look on a map, I couldn't find it on the map, but I reviewed it on the map, so.
You good at that? Might have found out where the code is.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah, it's, yeah. Or even, yeah. That's the only thing they even did, they pulled down by the code.
Well, more, there's those that go across Jim Creek, you know?
Yeah, 'cause that's the only thing talking about, so I wondered, I couldn't-
That on Twenty Street?
Well, I mean, it's got, if you call the Lakerwood, it's Countywood, something else, and then it's obviously-
Countywood seven.
Yeah.
Countywood seven, right.
You know what, did you know that one was in New York? Around four hundred sixty-seven avenue?
Well, this is, that was-
That would be the one, if it's ten miles, three hundred, that'd be the one on Jim Creek.
Jim Creek, okay, that's what I was saying.
And Matt had talked about that one.
By the one.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's where there's noise of-
Well, trade them, leave town. Maybe the other one, six, seven, eight, it's that two.
I remember that two, yeah.
We come out of the valley or whatever, down the street. Twenty-four, you start at twenty-four and go down to nine.
Yeah, okay. There's a bit of art on the paper too, I didn't get a chance to read it this morning, but, I come out to, we've been in jail.
It's, that was in art on paper?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to read it this morning, no.
That wasn't in art on paper?
Yeah, pretty lengthy article, yeah.
Oh, look at that.
There was just one, I just got a scan, just one brief mention of Marshall County case of prisoners here, but no one else. Only have difficulty finding a place for women and juveniles. Yeah, we got, we got plenty of room for women and juveniles.
Something I got too.
So, just, I didn't get into nuts of bolts, how it's gonna be paid for, and that whole situation, but, I'm sure we're gonna be paying for jail, and if we get the capacity, we're just like, no.
It's running, people don't realize.
Yeah, building, the building's cheaper.
Yeah. Not significant, but it's running.
Well, then the fight would be where he's put, the side of the one, there, county, I don't want it there, county. It doesn't really help anybody around here, so.
So, we're at the hall, here with Martin, or where was it?
Someone would, we wouldn't have, too, 'cause we got, we got, yeah, Nate, like, Marshall, or whatever.
Years ago, they talked about Summit, that's, that was the big thing, but I don't think Brown County was involved in the regional pay-up pocket that time. That it was coddling, we ran Dave, Marshall, Robert, and then we talked about putting it, getting a location for Summit, but, kind of, that's been years ago.
You wanna go, would you water it?
Uh, maybe not, I mean, I suppose you, you would, because we, these are the building permits and stuff.
Yeah, we're up to one time.
Yeah, but employees, employees are in there. Well, then I know when we, the counties even talked before, where they try to run stuff through the legislature to get these funds, and they called, they say they'd like to build a, their own regional, they pay for it, but then be able to pull people in, I thought that'd be something that they'd do.
But before we build our deal off, here, clearly also talked about going in with the tribe, but the issue was, who owns the land? And, and the county was, that's, I'm willing to put it into the federal government's name, but it didn't fly, so.
Are they still, still in one, the tribe?
Yeah, I mean, the last Saturday, I was a couple of weeks ago in the shelter, and they, they, I think they probably, I think they got about four and a half million dollars here, two, two years ago, for that purpose of building the deal. Then it kinda got put on hold, and last, I think I read that they were in the planning stages for a twenty-five bed unit. And, I don't know if they, could maybe even be going off the grid yet this year, honestly, for destruction, I mean, sometime next year, I guess is what I thought. And that's been, that's been a full force on you for a time, so. Again, maybe you need to have, well, four and a half million dollars for a twenty-five beds.
No.
You know, that would be awful.
And you realize, what, seven, you know, for seventy, I suppose, or higher, higher stuff, or what?
Yeah. And then, then you gotta get money to operate, like you said. Probably have a moving forward, a transfer this operation out of the C store, I don't know, across those, you know, whatever they call it?
They're just a new, membership or?
They own, they own like five hundred grocery stores, something in Gregory, or something in, one of, one of the reservation properties, two of the other places, then they had a couple of C stores, about South Dakota as well, they, and they own businesses, I thought, of the fourth generation or something like that. Coming in and kinda, kinda run the place, I guess I, I would sooner lease in the building from, from the tribe, and, someone said they rented it recently, there's not a lot of inventory left in there, so, so they're bringing down inventory, so they can rent it all, but.
The only thing I do not have, we can approve the transfer today, I will not be able to send it in until I give the trans, the affidavit papers, and who, who said, say that they have sent it to Dakota Crossing, so. They have, I have to have that sent in to the state, or, or she's not gonna approve it. But everything else is there.
That company's saying that it's a hung deal, and in the show last week, they were saying that it still has to be approved by all the districts, so. Yeah, here it is, we got this, in Oklahoma, Gregory. White, whitener.
White, South Dakota.
Yeah, white rivers.
White river.
Holy, holy. I'm gonna have to sort it out, but I'm here, I'm scared of putting dinner over this evening. Very few, any symptoms, Dennis, or she feels okay, or?
Yeah, everybody feels fine in here. Everybody still has their taste in smell.
So, still gonna say that you're cooking, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I've been doing a lot of cooking. Everything's fine, we're doing our social distancing, I'm in the basement, she's upstairs.
Long time talk for you?
Yeah, I, I think you're well, everyone's staying healthy, I guess, I'll get retested on Friday. Hopefully it'll show negative again, but, uh. I don't know, I got a birthday on Thursday, I'll be sixty-five, so I'm wondering if I can, for sure, has anybody heard anything about?
I think you're down to sixty-five, yeah, okay.
Yeah, have you heard of any sixty-five year olds that are getting that?
I guess I have, really.
Yeah, I'd make a call to the clinic and see if I could get one for my birthday.
Might as well.
You can motion on that, whether, or not, yeah.
Left one is next session?
Well, I don't know. Is it about it, or?
Can you, best people's names, or?
No.
But we can just, I think it's on, we can just make- I have a petition that we denied the application for medical assistance.
Second, Don Carlson, Tom favorite.
I've been calling in a number of times that, when I'm stamping those, it's always, it's kinda irritating on that speaker, isn't it?
You can definitely hear it.
I remember that very exactly. It's just not good, good sound. Try to be quiet. Where's the staffer at, Dallas?
Yeah, I got it in my briefcase, John. Hope you got a lot of ink in your pen today.
I just got a sign.
I listened in on the committee testimony, the, the joint appropriations committee talked about that HB twelve fifty-nine, and I guess there's a, there's another process, I had checked with Christie before, I didn't quite understand if they'd ordered it up or down, and she said there's another process, but it was to go through the court, we're gonna advance to the floor, so. That's what we need to watch, because the way I had it calculated, it was another ninety thousand dollars that we could provide to the existing townships, is what, you know, the cost of sharing in those bridge replacements.
Yeah, that'd be, only a lot of money.
Yeah. Was a stipulation in there, though, that they needed, they needed to participate in either SV one or an opt-out, or be eligible for the rest of the company.
Well, that's only fair, I think, honestly.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah. Maybe I'll first talk to you here this afternoon. There's a Biden that was all over.
Tom, what'd you think of that car driving it back from, in there?
Nice car, it, it really looks sharp, too, I think, it's got a nice color, nice wheels on it, but yeah, drives a little nice.
I stopped in, took a, got it and stuff, and I guess he did tell me it was the RS version, which had a few extra little goodies on it. I thought it was a pretty good stroke of business for nineteen thousand.
I think so, too, yeah, I think we-
Ran a car like that.
Yeah, so I just kept looking at some of the information, it said, the transmission, I was wondering, the eight-speed, the ten-speed, it said, continuous, so I wonder, is that's like a, is that like a hydraulic thing, then, like a Heidelstaff? Yeah, it just said, transmission continuous.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, these newer vehicles, like my Jeep, it's a twenty nineteen, you know, you can't hardly feel that thing shift, up or down. You really wouldn't even know unless you're looking at the tachometer.
Sure.
It's, it's so, so-
They got so many gears that shifts every, so often, and it's, not that they've changed it back yet, but they don't feel it.
Well, minimal, maybe an eight-speed anymore than a lot of ten-speeds, I don't know. And this has also been sixty-five as a speed, I mean, this is running about, it's over two thousand RPMs, but I thought it was kinda high for sixty-five, but.
You know, some of the newer motors are, they're smaller cubic inches, they do run high.
Yeah, this is a, I think it's a four liter thing.
Gives a little more torque, which is kinda good.
Yeah, it got some zip, so, yeah, it is a nice car, I guess, I'd sure recommend, buy one of those. Never bought a powered equipment in there, I walked in, gave the guy a check, and said, "Sign here," I said, "What do I sign this in?" Saying that there's no extended warranty on this, they said, "Okay," it's like, "Here's the keys." I said, "Okay," so you wanna fill up out here, fine, if you wanna fill up across the street, there's only five doors. We got in and out there in five minutes.
No dog in forty shoulders.
No, it wasn't, it was more of an implement store than it was a car dealership, so.
So, as far as you know, we got the three here, thirty-six thousand, and then, maybe a little bit more on the drive train?
Yeah, that's, that was the window sticker that called out that three is thirty-six, and I don't know what was the drive train, but, yeah.
Okay.
Need a thirty-six bumper to bumper, so that's, that's good to have.
Dan, Dan had made a comment earlier on, but he wasn't a hundred percent confident that being able to sold to a entity like ours, under the fleet, fleet yield, that maybe that they would be extended a little bit longer than that, but, like, three years and thirty-six is, that's great, so I think that's helpful.
And sure, we'll run it, I think, before we run a while, so.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Make the motion that we approve the transfer with federal super license, we could go to Crossing to Bush Foods, pending the affidavit. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Present by Dennis.
Pat's gonna be about a half hour late.
Can we get the sheriff in, huh?
Get Tyler, see if we can get Tyler in at ten.
What did Don say about a half hour late?
Pat, Pat's gonna be half hour late.
Oh, okay.
Did Jim have something, or did he just request to be on the agenda in case he did or something?
That's, yeah, he wants to be on the agenda at that time, in case he has something.
Whatever.
Rather than be in with the sheriff, he said.
Okay.
Tyler will come in at ten.
Say, did the insurance company get notified of that new vehicle, John?
Yes, they did.
Okay, thank you. I don't think they got awful good rhythm there, I would say.
Yeah, no funs in that side, is it? You get a blessing, and I, I got those greenies ready, so my phone, I can just put my phone in my pocket and walk around the house, it worked out pretty well, but, before that, I was plugged in, so I thought I would lose my battery, it's, uh, the long one.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but was Gage on for nine thirty?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll be jumping off here in just a, just a second, if you wanna disconnect me. He'll probably call in a few minutes early. Okay.
All right, move it.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
We used to work pretty much fun down ice fishing, I love. You know, by, I was on Wednesday, last week, things like that, just swap on top of, like, I was surprised to see-
Pretty scary cars out there.
I went Friday, and I was worried about, about when it got to the lake, man, it traveled around, highest, but I, I got there, I thought, well, I haven't seen any other vehicles out there, I'm not from a boat. There was a couple, or two, out there, so, well.
It's gonna be quite a good place.
Yeah, it's, it's just very natural.
Yeah.
But, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, yeah, a lot for certain, a bit, not good, a million of them, I mean. But it's gonna be in fifty, I don't think, I believe, they might ice fishing down.
Yeah, I think it's, without, having to talk to the guy who's out there, of course, they're pretty crude, they swept out on the ice, and everything, and, like, with so many people, boy, they were just kneeling. Like, with so many people, boy, they were just kneeling.
Where?
Morning, have a good time. If you're happy, if you're happy, it's, it's classified. Thirty one inches. Hello?
Uh, good morning, Todd.
Hey, Todd, how are you?
Going well, it's like, it's gonna be a nice, nice day.
It's windy, but probably gonna up here, I think.
Uh, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna complain about that yet. Not snowing.
No, no, that's important. She was just walking through, so she's just getting organized.
Good morning, Todd.
Hi.
Okay, so, we are talking today about getting, um, the storage units put back into the highway commercial on our zoning. And then with that, we are also going to add in the living quarters back in the, um, lake property, back in the garages on those back lots. And so Todd's gonna tell us the process.
So, so basically, um, I understand that you guys started the process with zoning also off by the lake. And the plan is to make sure that now you're gonna end up finishing that up in a year. And Sherry and I had some conversations about the policy, and she said, this is where the process that you want to go. So where we're at, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you want, the tech part of the ordinance, if you say, so I can write that section up. And then we get notices together, and then lay out a, lay out a path for how this all works. So, basically, my understanding right here is that now in the commercial district that we have a different spot in the county. We originally had taken out commercial storage facilities after a long, two-year discussion, now you want to strip those back into the commercial, is that correct? So, all right, so what that means then, if that's correct, what we will do is, is Article twelve, Section one, twelve oh four of the commercial district, additional use, is we will add number thirty four, commercial storage garage to that section. Then the other question is, we had a long discussion, and right now, in your ordinance, accessory buildings, people aren't allowed to live in. So that means I can't live in my quantity, even when mom says I can live in the house, right?
Yeah.
And so, and I, I can't live in the garage, and, um, you know, or a storage shed, or even at the lake, um, a garage on the back lot of my own front lot, right?
Right.
So that's why the rule is set up. Sherry would say that you were okay with still not allowing people to live in, uh, accessory building, but if I'm at the lake, and I have a, a garage or something on, on a back lot, we're okay allowing somebody to put sleeping quarters in or live in that accessory building?
Correct.
Okay.
Would that be something one put a time limit on, I mean? Because I think the theory behind it is most people who build a shed, they put their toys in there, they sleep in there until they build a house. I mean, is that something that you have a time limit, or just forget about it, and just say, live there as long as you want?
Well, okay, so this is, we can talk about this a little bit. I think there's a two-step process. One, we, we can say, we will allow dwelling units in an accessory structure on a back lot. Now, that doesn't mean if I got a garage on the lakefront, that I need to turn that into a second house.
Right.
This, 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 this living quarters stuff only allowed on the back lot. Doesn't, it doesn't let me turn the two-story garage on the lakefront lot into another house.
Right.
We had this long discussion, and, and unless you change your course on it, I just want to make sure.
I think all rules is the back lot, right?
Right.
All right, so now on a back lot, how we define back lot would be an individual lot affiliated with a waterfront parcel, which is physically separated by, of the shoreline by a legally permissible parcel road right away. So what I mean by that is that I've got the lake, I've got a lot next to lake, I've got my house on the lake, I've got a dr, a road, and then on the back lot, I've got my storage unit. I can live in that accessory dwelling on the back lot because I have connection to the front lot, lake access. Is that what you're meaning, or are you saying any back lot, whether I've got a house on the front lake, front lot? I'm trying to make sure what, where you will allow people to live in, yeah?
I think more commonly, what happens, Todd, is they build the garage and the living quarters on the back lot first, and then they live there while they're building, or planning to build their lake shore property. My, my life concern is that, I don't think we should just allow, if they have sleeping quarters, they need to have water, sewer, you know, they need to have, there's gonna be living quarters, they need to have all the amenities that go with it, not just a bedroom.
Dennis just texted me, Dennis is not here today, he's called in, and he's texting, said that the building needs to comply with health and safety standards, so. Cause that kind of sums up that, what you were talking about now.
Well, I'm not sure what health and safety standards mean, I mean, you don't really, we don't have a building code, so to speak, um.
Well, I mean, in, in the city, you, you can't live in a, can't live in a house if there's no, no running water. So, I mean, would that be a health code then? Or would not even be enforced?
The county, the county doesn't have a health code.
Okay.
We better add in a compliant water and sewer or something, it'd be specific.
Okay, so, what we could do, dwelling units in an accessory structure located on a back lot, and then you have to add, and such structures, um, and such structures shall be connected to a public or private water system and a public or private sanitary sewer system.
Right.
I think that works, yes. Well, cause otherwise, what I'm concerned is that, some, as your example, if they have the house first, and they just want to build the living quarters on the back one for their, someone to come and visit, that's not, it's not a hotel, you know, I mean, it's, where our thinking is kind of the other way, where they would use that as a.
Well, okay, so you're saying that this will only be allowed for if I plan on building a house, I'm just living in it temporarily until I get a house built.
Well, that's kind of the, that's.
Once the house is built, then the, the, the accessory stuff goes away?
I don't know, I don't think you could.
It will never go away.
That's my, yeah.
It's always gonna.
It's always overflow, let's, no, it is.
Right, it will be an overflow that's used afterwards, but it won't be their primary residence.
Okay, so, in order for an accessory building, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, is, did you get other sections of your ordinance to say one thing, you guys are wanting to do something completely different? So I'm just trying to, trying to envision what is that you want to do? So, if, if I go out to the lake, I own, I own the lake front lot, and I own the back lot, and there's no house on the, on the lake front lot, but I, for some odd reason, I want to build a temporary garage that I can live in for those two or three summers by building another house, how long can I do that before I have to have a house constructed?
And that was my question earlier, should we put a time limit on that, or, or not, I just.
Well, if they, you know, how are you gonna enforce it, Todd, if they build it and say, I'm gonna, let's say, two years, and they, and five years ago, by the end of that, what are you gonna do to them?
Sure, they're building down, it's not, it's not, it's not legal.
Yeah.
I don't know why the hell you'd even be encouraging it, but that's, that's your problem, it just feels like it's a pain in the ass.
Well, I mean, I mean, you drive down by Big Stone, and there's one on, one on nine, I mean, every, every single house has got a, a back lot, they got a building on there, and I'm sure most of them have some kind of a living arrangement inside them.
Okay, but that, that, in that situation, you're saying I've got a house already, and then there's a, and there's a, and then there's a, there's a back lot. I mean, I'm okay, I'm o, I'm okay with that, I think that's really easy, I'm, I'm living on the lake, I got a house on the lake, I want to put a storage garage on my pontoon, and I'm gonna put sleeping quarters and a, and a shower and a bathroom in it.
Yeah.
All right, what I just did, I, I got that written, though, that allows for that to happen. You know, dwelling units in an accessory structure, accessory structures to the main, to the main building on the lakefront, I got that figured out, that part's written. The question is, though, if you want to allow somebody to do a back lot development before they do a lakefront development? Cause I've got, we've got a.
I understand what you're saying, it kind of, it kind of comes with that, they may not rebuild it on the lakefront, and that's what we want, first.
But the majority of them, when they come in, they buy their lot, they buy the two lots. They want to have access to have all of their toys and a place to stay first, with water, with sewer, with all that, and then to build the house at a lake.
How often does that happen, is that seventy-five percent, five percent, sixty percent, seventy percent?
About seventy-five.
Okay.
Dennis just texted me too, and he says, realistically, that, that back lot property is mainly from a guest house. So whether they build the house first, and then build a shed with living quarters, or build a shed to live in while they're building a house, yeah, I think he's correct, it's eventually is going to become a guest house.
Right. But right now, your ordinance says, countywide, that I'm not allowed to live in an accessory building. And you either just have to decide, we call this a dwelling, you know, a, a standard dwelling on the back lot, which that's the question, do we want to be allowing a lot of the back lot development? You know, and then if that's the case, we gotta come up with another term, the back lot, the back lot is generally, you know, right next to the lake, separated by the road, and so, but then you.
Well, I don't think we want to, we don't want this to turn into, again, say, for instance, they build the house first, then they build a, a back lot, we don't want it to be two separate families permanently living there, I guess what we want is.
Yeah, that's my point.
That's what we're trying to avoid, I think, so.
But if you, if you allow me to come in and build a shed prior to the main house, and I'm living in the shed, and what's to stop me from selling that to somebody else and coming in a year later and building a house on the main lot?
Well, or, or selling the lakefront lot to someone else.
Yeah.
And I sell you the lakefront lot because I'm not the other one you're just giving me, you have to use the lake supply. I mean, that kind of stuff happens on all, on developed lakes all over the place, and I don't entertain it enough just for people. And so the question is, you know, and most counties, even with lakes, don't allow people living in the, the, the shed across the road either. Um, and this, this, they don't, because there's a lot of problems with this, most of those things don't have building codes, so, so you don't have firewall separation from the, from where you store the boat, and where you put in the bedrooms, um, you know, those types of things. Uh, it's not, it's, it's just, on fire protection standpoint, it's not a good idea, but.
How do you determine what's a pertinent structure, I mean, what, what's supposed to be, that says, I'm gonna build a house on the back lot?
Yeah, you don't want that.
It's permitted.
That was my, my memory was, you guys didn't want to see a lot of back lot development for front colors.
But then, but if we allow garages with living quarters, that's what we're doing.
As long as, and as long as it's tied to a lot on the, on the front side of the lake.
Right.
The two, the two lots are buried together. And that, I think, is probably more palatable, if somebody just, you know, buying a front lot and a back lot, building new structures and selling the back lot off to somebody else or to profile off to somebody else. If you, once, once, once you do that, and let you, you know, have it in there, um, you're tearing buildings down, and then you're going to court on the road too.
So can, can, can you legally write it in such a fashion that you, if you have a front lot with a house on it, you have a back lot with a living quarters, that they're in essence one property, and they can't be separated and sold to individuals, or?
How would you enforce that?
I don't know, I'm just asking the question, just because it's, it's getting confusing here.
What is happening is, the way I, the way I've got it written right now, I'm saying that a dwelling unit in an accessory structure located on a back lot, so that's our shed, that's our garage, or whatever. And I've got bathroom, kitchen, and a, and a bedroom in it. That's an allowable use as a conditional use, is what I've got it into there. And then, we define a back lot as an individual lot affiliated with waterfront parcel, which means it's tied to the lake lot, right? So, by having it as a conditional use, they come in, and I come to the board and say, I'm going to build this garage on the back lot first. Well, by doing it as a conditional use, you can then turn around and say, all right, but in three years or whatever, you have to have, yet, that somebody has a main house, otherwise, you have to take the living quarters out of that shed.
That could be, that could be part of their conditional use concept.
Yeah, yeah.
Dennis, Dennis, you sent me another text, you just said that clearly, lake and roiling, back lot development is very common.
I think.
Certainly, no, it is on Big Stone.
I think if we can put that time restriction there, that would work, Todd.
You know, the other end of it is, I, I'm like, if I own a back lot, and I can make a conventional house sit on it, I think that's, that's, that's allowed. You know.
Yeah, what?
Should have moved me out.
That's why I asked, how do you determine which is a garage with a living quarters versus a living quarters with a garage, you know, that, who's gonna, how do you make that determination?
I guess, that's, that's where you can, if we come in and we, you know, if, 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 let me put it this way. If I'm building a building, and, and I'm gonna, let's just say, it's the garage, and I'm gonna build the house down the road, I'm gonna turn around and say that if more than fifty percent of that garage is storage based and not living space, then it's not a house.
Okay.
The other thing I think we want to avoid too is, is, basically, like, we're, we're trying to put the curtains on, is, we, you don't want a bunch of really nice houses on the lake, and then someday decides to put up a steel building on the back lot, that's all he's ever gonna do.
Right, and so I think regardless, whatever you do, I think back lot development, you know, if it's not what I would call a conventional house, should be a conditional use.
That's not a problem with that.
Yeah, and if we could put, like I said, if we could put a three-year contingency on it, that, that they have to build a lake, a house on the lake property.
What he said was, gotta have so much space dedicated to storage, and so much.
I agree with that, but, you know, it's too big for me.
My question to Todd, you used the, the word dwelling, dwelling units in an accessory structure. Well, when I look at definition, on page one twenty-eight, dwelling, any building including seasonal housing structure, unfortunately, which contains one or more rooms with sleeping quarters, and is further designed and used exclusively for residential purposes. I don't think the word dwelling should be used there, should it?
At least in your definitions, probably not, yeah.
You know, uh, maybe the word structure might be better.
Uh, structure is much more ambiguous.
Cause that says anything, structure is anything constructed directly, it affects location. Structure includes buildings, manufactured homes, walls, fences, signs, whatever, but I'm just saying, I don't think dwelling is the right word.
Let's see, a dwelling unit is one room, or rooms connected together, and they can't separate independent house, sleeping, and elements. Your owner, occupancy, or rental lease. A dwelling unit talks about maybe a state that's getting an independent cooking bathroom, sleeping room. You're reading the term dwelling, I'm talking about the term dwelling unit.
Yeah, I see. He's, he's up in the...
Yeah.
The term dwelling unit says one room or room connected together constitute separate independent housing establishments for owner occupancy or rental or lease. And physically separated from other rooms dwelling, that could maybe be a state structure containing independent cooking bathroom, kitchen, or so.
Okay, so if you, if you add the word unit, it would be okay?
I, I said, I said the article minds what I proposed is that you would write, the term would be dwelling unit in an accessory structure located on a backlot would be a conditional use in the lakefront district.
Okay.
So the accessory structure is a structure that's accessory to a main house. For tying the backlot to the front lot in order to do that. And so if I'm coming in wanting to build a garage or a storage building with a dwelling unit in it until I make the main house, then that's where you would come back and say, "Okay, but you got two, three years, whatever that's, that's, that's it to get a house built." If I'm coming in and the backlot's big enough that I can put a conventional house on it with, you know, that's more than fifty-five percent, you know, living area, you know, not storage area, garage area, then that would be a permissible use. That would just be a precautional law. Is that what you're, is that what you're wanting? Is that just?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's what we wanted, Todd.
Okay. I'm gonna, I got, I'm about eighty percent there. I gotta sit down and take this through a little bit and, um, figure out how the best way to write that without having to switch a lot of different sections of the order. So my goal would be to have that done today. Um, and if we get it done today, what we would end up doing is, uh, putting together a, a high level, we got published notes and a mix maker. Um, and probably closing sometime probably the end of month, having a third and a second meeting and the first meeting April. That'll be about the first part of May before everyone names it on the back.
That's what we find, that's pretty good.
I have one more. I have, I have one more question. Um, on the storage, hybrid commercial storage unit, did you say Article twelve, Section twelve oh four, number thirty-two?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Okay, very good. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, okay, anything else that's got me on the wire?
How's it going otherwise? Did you keep busy working on the office?
Yeah, it's been really, really busy. I mean, we're still, uh, you know, we're not really still going to be very much living in a collet in most places unless there's something really, really important that's part of being there at. Uh, but a lot of counties have migrated to, you know, making their meeting rooms more technology friendly and you can, you know, for about, you know, twelve, fifteen hundred bucks, you can have meetings where everybody can see each other and do that kind of a thing. So, uh, looking like you guys, I was just looking at some stuff this morning, um, it sounds like the COVID reversal worked out pretty well for, for Roberts County.
Very well.
Excellent.
Yeah, okay, it ended up pulling down like one and a half million dollars or something.
One point four.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's nice. And we're waiting to see what's gonna happen with this new, uh, you know, stimulus bill. Uh, they're talking about another three hundred and twenty-five billion to be made available to the state local government. So who knows, if, if they might, if they work out again, it might, you know, be the same thing next year or this year too.
It'd be nice if we got a pay for it, I guess.
Well, you and I aren't paying for it.
Right, yeah, that's right.
It, it, it just pains me, it just pains me to see all this money being spent. It's been helpful for some of us, but I just don't think it's, uh, long-term is the best thing for us.
That's, I worry about that.
Um, yeah, other than that, it's, it's just, uh, you guys got projects, you got something that you need to work on, you can somehow just give us a call, as always, you know?
Sure, yeah, I would appreciate that.
Well, all right, I'm trying to get something put together and get back to Sherry who's on yesterday, so we can, uh, keep things going down the road.
All right.
I still have one more.
Yeah, I have some thoughts for him.
Oh, yeah, we, uh, we're gonna look at a top segment this year. We have to start putting that in play.
Oh, I'll have to talk to Greg. I don't know when that, when that deadline is. Let me see if I can put the, I know.
Or tell him I can get hold of Greg. Or, or Dawn says she can get hold of Greg and ask him then too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna put, put, see if I can. Got it, sure, I'll tell him. Where you looking? You know what you want. You put forward the budget.
Well, I think it was that, the program where you, you commit for what, three years and you pay for, the, the grant phase for two years and you pay for one year, is that correct, or?
Uh, dude, I think it's a five-year deal now, where they, they, they do four, you pay one or something.
I guess that's what we probably get it said. Unless there's multiple, I mean, we could pick and choose, I guess, that works best for us.
Well, I think your program's like, you want to love, you want to love people and, um...
Well, I know one of the things I do share, talk about is the possibility of utilizing it. He said it probably helps on getting grant money. He says it's gonna be utilized somewhat to, to work in the schools as well.
Yeah, yeah, like a school officer, where you guys spend so much of the time loads of it being a school officer.
Yeah, maybe ten, ten hours a week or whatever the case, maybe five hours a week or, but he, he seemed to think that...
I think, yeah, I think it's a little more, about probably over a half time, so it could be all. That's what I think, but let me do a little digging and I'll have Greg, uh, get a hold of Dawn. I know they awarded the twenty twenty award, it came out a little while ago, so that would tell me that, you know, the D O E program.
Probably ways down the road, huh?
I'm hoping it's there. Yeah, I just, I love you, Greg. The South Dakota in twenty twenty, uh, New County, two three five, two three all, they've got a lot of them that one. Stanley, Georgia, Somerset, Turner, to the Warren, to the Agnes, and so. There was one, I'm about ten of them awarded last year, all about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five to three hundred thousand dollars.
Ten.
I won there. Mostly for what? Mostly for what? Uh, Somerset got three, Rappah不尽 got three, Warren got three, off. Okay, good, that, but I will, uh, let me touch base. I'll talk to Greg and find out when that deadline is.
Okay. Yeah.
Hey.
All right, very good. Well, we'll see, Todd.
All right, thanks, Hal.
Thank you.
See you, bye now.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Sharon.
Our press in the news last night said there was like seventeen governors, because as Republicans may not get as much state money out of this COVID thing, and they missed in South Dakota as well.
They might not get so much.
Why?
Because it's a different bill.
Might have something to do with compliance with.
Oh, 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 I see, yeah.
It might have something to do with compliance to the CDC.
CDC, yeah.
Uh, Fisher.
Break.
Black and gray. Black and gray, so that'd be neat. Look at that, she's something like that, but it must not be important.
Text me here.
Hello, hello. I'm good.
Give the department equipment already?
Uh, we'll, the shirt was big. Look, look, look.
Well, I appreciate this.
Yeah, I'm excited now, so. Oh, well, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Because, uh, I was thinking, we're gonna have to, you know, sorry, we need to be busy, especially on nights that work on a middle shift.
It's great.
Yeah, back in the place.
Yeah. And then it can rain.
Hello. How are you?
Hey, I'm in there.
Oh, that's good.
First half and second half, bro.
Oh, hey!
Then you don't know, because there's, there's, there's nobody hanging around on the, hit a second round.
You might as well pay it all, what the heck?
We can use, we can use the money.
Only if you use the money.
Yeah. Nice to see you, guy.
Yeah.
We, uh, yeah, there's. All right.
You left that copy ready up.
Yes.
Okay, I'll sit down and make comments or everything I've got and then just...
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll keep checking on.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you do. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bring you out of the way. Okay. Back to your top.
You're right.
And then I'll get you out of there.
We got, this is the part we got the present in here. Six seconds? Sixteen three?
We need an motion on that, Tom, or not? Have you trained in that order? When he gets, I think when he gets it written, go, get him. Out of there, no. And you have to get, I'm gonna, that's really hard now.
We can talk about, go ahead and approve the deets, or no, the deed report and that concern's off the report. You know, and the bills and all that. Because if this other takes too long, I'm walking out.
I gotta, I gotta tell you, he's thirty, so.
And Tom's got.
And that's, I don't know about. Best thing, not much there.
Oh, the registered deeds report went around, correct?
Yep.
And connection to the stocks. No, just no.
You can pull it back now.
I think we need approval for action, just to know.
Not to answer, yeah. Motion, you said on the back end, and all she said was. Please, I'm standing. Yes.
James wanna call back now?
Oh, I don't know. I think I got bored. You guys have not been able to read that full. Yeah, he was, yeah.
Forty-nine degrees up there tonight.
What is it?
Yeah, that's my chances.
Supposed to get up to fifty-nine.
I'm loving this.
Now, I just saw that walk in and we asked our sheriff to be here again.
So get that gun, that's what I want to see first.
I see you. Okay. Are we calling it off after you? We're putting up the over, overtime.
Morning!
We need to get some, get some tired.
Did you see the jail administration for seven hours?
Overtime.
Overtime.
He said that that was gonna be quite high.
Really, huh?
Well, but...
And the forty-seven F double.
And it's supposed to be ten hours a day, huh?
Fifteen hours, yeah.
I'm watching and listening online. There's a little delay where the works.
Okay.
Okay.
Morning!
Morning!
Morning.
Yeah. Morning, I seen, uh, John's downstairs quick, so. Somebody decided to put three bales on the road, so I went up there to help them, and you got up there and you were pushing them off in the ditch. I thought I would be late. Lot later, so. I can get this to John after we get done with the job, but I'm, I'm... What I'll do is get caught, I'm waiting for him. Yeah. I'll make it a little easier for you.
Stop, stop, there are more ladies here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we got bill quotes for the month of March. CH, CHS over here, it's two thirty-seven nine for number two, two forty-nine nine for Ethel. And Bins were two fifty-five for number two Phil, and two seventy-four for Ethel. And bids were two fifty-five for number two fuel and two seventy-four for ethanol. The sum is quite a difference. CHS has a whole bed.
Two fifty-five.
Two seventy-four for ethanol. So, how big would you see a CHS?
Motion, like, Tom? Second by Tom, all bigger.
Okay, so yeah, we got the weight limits up now yesterday and today we're finishing up now, but they're on there. So the weight limit's there. They posted down for the whole month of March to be in April. Um, I'm pretty good. Been getting some calls, we did leave one road out for a little bit. But they'll all be up by tomorrow and then we'll be posting. So the only other thing I have is, uh... If I pass these around, you guys maybe wanna just look at this stuff for that game and cashes them? Cause they got a lot to us right away. My next one here.
Big, but I'll do it.
So...
For this one.
No. So, that poll got back to right away, um, the other day. And as you see, up there, I don't know if you have the old one, it doesn't matter, I got mine. The only thing that went up was, it was eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents more for cracks. And when they come here, they went up on that, but Paul's money for you on that. So the total that I give you is fifty-four thousand, seven sixty-four, and that just went up. Um, it just went up to eight thirty-five. So, and if you take that down, it's twenty-five percent, you come out with thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. And, uh, zero ninety-five, so... Not even, you know, that's what it went up, so. Our twenty-five percent would still be under fourteen thousand, that would be most. Um, and that's, towards they said when they did this, if they got crazy, they wouldn't even do like, you know, so... They would kinda go on these numbers, you know, because it's not set stone, but when they go to get it out. If they got crazy, they probably, they wouldn't even accept it if it gets crazy, so that's kinda where we're at right now. I'm not on the front, you wanna find me a minute now, but he says just, uh, you know, just, uh... That's the best estimate and, uh, you know, just that I don't know what you guys wanna proceed, however it needs to be, so... I guess it wasn't too bad, it wasn't a big deal, but I don't think that's who probably went up to how much myself, but maybe, um... But it doesn't matter, I mean, the bids come out, that's the only time it didn't help, so... And I don't know if you guys wanna discuss that, um, when Dennis is here or however you wanna do it, it doesn't make no difference to me. You guys can decide that anytime, we don't have to be...
I guess we can wait for Dennis to be back next week.
You don't have to, you can do it just now, at least you got the literature, you got the price and that's just...
Is he back on the phone?
Uh, well, he's been texting me, he's, uh, he's watching on the live stream, so...
So, I mean, and that way you guys could, uh, discuss it and you guys can get back to me anytime on that, you know, so... I did have a little, um, follow-up meeting with, um, with Steve Minder for the bridge project that, you know, we're discussing with him, you know, along the... So...
Yeah, it sounds like I should probably be by in the direct...
Yep, okay.
Paying the text and everything, so I'll stand by here.
Did you get my email, Dennis?
I, let me check and see.
I just emailed that about game fishing parks that Pat was talking about.
Okay. Uh, it didn't show up yet.
See, the, the numbers remain the same, went up about eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, about eight hundred and thirty-five dollars went up, so... Our twenty-five percent would be thirteen thousand nine, or thirteen thousand, six ninety-one, so... It was under fourteen thousand yet for twenty-five percent, so...
Well, I think everyone knows how I feel about that, um, that I'd really like to see us, uh... You know, go forward with that and to continue, you know, the improvement in that road as far east as money would provide for. And I guess that would be Pat's call to, uh... To park on game fishing parks because that, you know, that's our road, we have a responsibility to give you a payment and anytime you can give somebody to pay seventy-five percent for the cost. And your leadership here is slammed out for us, but... However, the group feels...
I agree to get the work done, I just, my, my issue is, if we can do it for forty-five hundred bucks, I'd rather do that than spend thirteen thousand, six hundred and have them do it. You know, if we need to switch over and use the same granite chips that they're using opposed to the rock, we would use any of that, it's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, you know, I'm always in favor of that, Don, if it can be coordinated, so it doesn't look like, you know, piece of bill first. And that'll be, you know, like you say, using the same material and then we have to have somebody come in and sweep up the leftover chips because we can't be pushing those off to the side, so... That would have to be coordinated with Pat and the contractor, I suppose, or whoever can get out there and sweep that stuff up.
We, we have a room, right?
Yeah.
We just keep it in the middle and we pack it typically, don't we?
Yeah, we just keep it in the middle, we have to move the chips back there. Comes on all the ground, yes.
I'd be on board with that, Don.
I don't know where the granite chips would come out of, they haul them all the way down from Millbank and bring them in, then at the break, somebody would have to haul them there.
I suppose, whatever, he says it's fine.
Different things, and I guess they use the motion, we use MC and Auger, it's a little different, you might have to do a little different application for that, too, of the rocker. Different chips, you know, of the rock, it's one day and different, like, a little different application.
Time to figure that out, right?
Yeah.
He said it's only like five, six loads, so it would be...
Yeah, it wouldn't be a lot, so... Cause we're only talking that ten, ten miles in a mile into the park where we would do it. We just have to coordinate some when they go out on the beds, if they accept beds, if they, you know, whatever goes on. And then just stop the fall, fall reimbursing and whatever costs it costs and then give us whatever costs back. That's what they wanna do.
Well, I think everybody's in favor of it, yeah. I mean, uh, what do you think, Pat, do it then, or...
Well, I am, just because of the cost saves, I mean, he's, again, whole pricing working up to forty-three hundred dollars, he shot it last week, twenty-five percent of that. The seventeen thousand, twenty-five cents we do reimburse, so we'd be costing you over four thousand dollars, but... Let me do the whole thing, it's, 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 uh, it would be a nice, uh... Yeah. Seventeen, we do seventy-five percent, we cost us roughly forty-five thousand, if we have them do it, it's thirteen, six ninety-one.
Can we do this in conjunction with the road east to there?
Yeah, the wall, the road used to there coming in, it's more...
That's why I'm saying could we...
It's a totally...
It might be a different thing, but as long as you got...
Same, it's the same.
At the same time.
Chipper and... Paving and chipping, you have to switch over, the trucks can't do both at the same time. I mean, paving, you gotta pave and then you gotta put the chipper bars onto the trucks.
If you don't chip till right away after you pave it anyway.
No. And we wanted the chips doing that part, we were just gonna do some paving on the way to the park. The chip seal, you have to, um, you know, reautomize that, you have to put chipper bars onto the trucks, you need to go ahead and then bring the chipper over. And, uh, you know, that's, you won't be paving and then chip sealing at the same time, you know?
I didn't know if you were gonna pay, if you were just gonna chip seal it for the paint.
Yeah, no, we're gonna play on the chip seal on that coming out east because that will be patched because it's just terrible.
Are you too afraid to let them do what we do?
If he feels he's confident to do it, yeah, we can say, you know, probably ten thousand dollars, but yes.
Tom, I agree. Dennis?
Yeah, I'm all for that.
One thing I would stipulate, I would, like you said, I would like to use the same chip savey so it doesn't work like a patch company. So it looks like continuous project.
It might look a little different, but yeah, yeah, we may farm seal, like, they're gonna farm seal over anyway, it's all gonna look a block when you're done, so... I'll talk to the guy after and we'll see what they're doing for sure and maybe, you know, I'm sure they're using crack and probably...
Motion, I redo it then?
I guess if they need it, yeah.
Motion, like... Tom?
I'll take that, second.
Second by Dennis? Oh, all the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's all I have today, I guess.
Something's better than this, we saw the paper, we got those money for those bridges.
Sorry, I was gonna bring that up. We got two, you know, the P E R, the bridges that we had last year, we got accepted for the big money now, so we're gonna get that back. So, we should be able to do construction next year on those two. It's gonna be quite a bit, though, I mean, a hundred and some thousand for one and ninety-two thousand for the other for a hundred percent. So, yeah, we're looking at two hundred and thousand dollars for, you know, that extra for our bridge.
And the one four sixty-eight, that, that's Jim Creek?
Yeah, the one on Jim Creek is that one down in the line down there, that one there is a little more money, I don't know what the... Steve checked in on it because it might be a little bit, I don't know, the ball's gonna be put in place or not gonna be precast, so... That's a lot more money, but it's a lot better project. Just like we're going in, um... And, uh, I am checking on some money, they got some more new money coming up for another grant, for some different monies for bridge. And hoping maybe we can try to get this Bieber Bridge going in on some of that, I got Dr. Cliff and I got Dr. Peter. And this job will show already if we can get that through, you know, we had done all the groundwork for that Bieber Bridge. And if, whether them don't know, they're not gonna get on their side, I'm gonna go shoot for some, this grant money from this other pot of money that they're giving, the state's giving. And then we can get in on that right away. They said that has to be signed by April ninth. So, this just came out, they had a conference yesterday, they're gonna have a conference on Thursday, next Thursday, whatever, on this, how this money is. And I'm hoping to call it down, well, see if we can.
We just have to be careful going forward, cause I remember when, when they said that they didn't get the funding a few, we thought, well, maybe we should just back down. They said, well, they already spent X amount of dollars on engineering, so if we backed out, someone would have to pay that, that's on the...
And here's the whole deal, though, because they technically, I'm assuming, got federal state money to pay that sixty thousand dollars of engineering, yeah. But that would've been federal state money that they got, like, you know, they all paid for that PD stuff and the design, I mean, they got remarriage, they got paid that way.
Yes, I just wanna make sure that if we back out on something different, they don't come back and say, well, hey, you gotta reimburse us because...
That's why I was like, you could've, cause, you know, they're ending up with their tax money going back, like we discussed, that's over five thousand dollars there. And, uh, I'm hoping maybe we can try to get some of that out and if we can go for that money, there's no sense in not to. If they maybe won't get the money. But, yeah, we cannot knock out anything the other way.
Yes.
I'm gonna be checking on that, maybe they won't get the money, so...
I just wanted to mention, hey, did you get any bids yet from the Tunis? Cause I see that they were in Watertown. They've been to Watertown, cold makes it one thirty-five a ton and hot makes it sixty-two a ton.
Oh, yeah. So I'm thinking we're gonna be about the same as last year.
It wasn't, yeah, Tim and I were talking sixty-two.
Yeah, that's what it was last year for us, too, yeah. And I was thinking about if we could get it either, like, we got in the third week in March, but if we wanna do it towards the end or first part of April, I don't know. Could get the bids in for, or amortization bids, we have to amortize for two weeks and everything, so... I thought about this morning about getting done and get our information together.
They, they must be digging in the rock pretty deep on this, isn't it?
They do it pretty early.
The oil's a fifteen, fifteen hours a barrel, just in the last couple of months.
Thing about Bill, though, I'm gonna head back to him and ask him, guys, have stories that they've been storing up oil somewhat?
Most, most guys put their savings in their pocket, though.
Yeah, plus they're, I think, you know, they do a lot of recycle and they use a lot of recycle...
Okay.
Material, they mix, so that's saving up some money, too. I can't say that for sure, but that's what's going on. And, uh, but yes, we're gonna think about getting them as long as soon as we can, you know? Sometimes it gets too early. I can't believe Watertown, they're this early already.
Yeah, I just happen to know...
What do you think of Springdale, Tom, just starting in, yeah?
Oh, um, Springdale, I talked to Steve, they're gonna have their meetings today with the township. Went over different sizes of culverts. One we remeasured yesterday, if they wanna put like an eight foot or a bigger, just put one instead of two, that's their thing, but if you can, if you go over eight foot, I think you got too big of a hump on the road. But unless they wanna build it, so, we kinda had a bounce back a little bit, if you're gonna have to make a seven. Two, seven or two eights or, you know, or if they're gonna go bigger, then they're gonna have to figure out the road part, because it's too low. You can't put a ten footer in there, that would step up above the road, so...
And you probably wouldn't drain any more water out either, cause it's...
No, you wouldn't drain any more out, but they're figuring...
Why would it always up that high?
They're figuring, well, they want to put in one, that's their problem, but, and it wouldn't be as close, you know, as taking the water, but... Maybe, you know, with the water situation now and, uh, in the future, they figure it can back up so much, and it doesn't hurt anything. And if it does go over the road and it's gonna be overflowing, maybe just go patch the gal road up a little bit once it goes over and you're down like a spillway.
Remember, it didn't ever that full.
Yeah. They say they haven't remembered that that would be that full in a hundred years. Still, they just made it put one here, one there over there. That depends, I, I don't know what the landscape, you could put a ten footer in, you could do it. But, you know, the ice is not out, you can't get a good depth of the, of the river or the stream. So I'm telling you, you know, that might be two feet at least, but I'm glad to put that, so... But, yeah, so we had that and he got all the prices and so they're gonna be on down. They asked if I come down later, if the contract is, that they might come down together and look at the project, cause all if I go down, it could be part of this, they have no problems, so that's kind of updated on that.
Um, the wind towers. I noticed on Sunday when I was playing south, one of them were going. Yesterday when I came back, they were not...
No, the, the brake is a little loose on one or two and they're coming over real slow around, they're not real, they're not going yet, they're not, not running. But there is some that the brake is maybe not tight and it goes around real slow, couple of them. And they're all working in Grand County now for quite a while, all of the ones in Roberts County are erected up, so, they're just... I suppose they gotta wait till all the ones in Grand County are up, and then they'll have to start, start doing all the electrical part to get, you know, to get, uh, what do you call it, power to them. But they're all up, I mean, they've been up for quite a while.
Yeah, they had a good one for working, didn't they?
But they still wrecked a road on the asphalt going across the interstate.
Going across where?
Going across the interstate on, on the, on the road going across where we have our Grand County and South together. It's pretty beat up, holes and they got ground most spots and they're gonna have to fix that when they're done.
Talk about that twenty-seven comes out of Summit, they didn't do Summit.
That's the one, twenty-seven, but they're saying they don't have one to do that on the east end, which I, I don't agree, but everything...
I've gotten a few calls, that's...
Everything to the west is all broke up, that's what they need fixed. So, if you get together with Grand County, with Curry, and they find out what we wanna do, they're gonna need to do an overlay patch or...
We did a fair amount of them, the tire a few years ago and everybody was going, I said, where everybody went around, got stopped and all that. And we did a fair amount of work there a couple of years ago, so now about twenty trips.
Yeah, they need to fix them when it gets nice. They don't wanna do it on the projects or down the arm, but that would be, I don't know. Most of all, heavy components there and that, I bet all them are going down, cause I can't see them. There's a lot of... There's a lot of bits that come in and out of it. Yeah, they've been going through there, and they've been going around, so that road needs to be fixed, or the hall road. Yes, and always that's what I have today.
Now, Pat, hey, hold on, I got a couple of things.
Okay, yeah.
Jimmy, um, you know, I, I wonder if you were talking about the House Bill twelve fifty-nine that's, uh, um, being talked about now up there in the legislature? Uh, twelve fifty-nine would provide three million dollars to counties to assist in bridge replacement?
Yeah. Yep, that was one of them, yep.
Okay, and I'm wondering if Saint John or Jennifer Kynes has reached out to you for any data? Because we do have a, you know, our comprehensive bridge plan for one thing, but in a real short summary, you could provide them of all of those bridges that we've identified as being extremely substandard in the red. And to help, to help get a positive vote on passing that, that bill.
Yeah, I think they already, I think they pa-, uh, they bumped it up some money from a little bit is what I think they ended up doing, but I don't know if that vote was totally done. I can talk to Doug too and Pierre, he would tell me.
Yeah, I think it'll be coming up for a vote on the floor, so, uh, they, they should probably know that.
Yeah.
The second thing I was gonna ask you about, Pat, was, uh, did you mention the Clark Engineering that we'd like to have look at our lot out there at the Highway Department?
Yeah, I talked to Steve and, um, another gal that works at Clark, and, uh, we were trying to see if we could get some, some money to, well, um, to borrow. There was some, a couple of programs to try to get some, you know, like grant money or some low interest money to, to help with that. But the criteria, we didn't meet the criteria on those two things, so that kinda went out the wayside, but still looking and, and, uh, working on that, so.
Okay, but what we had talked about was having one do some survey work to set some elevations if that drainage could be changed, so we can dissect our lot out there.
Yeah, we, we're gonna work on that, 'cause I mean, the drainage part is, you figure all that out when we figure what we wanna do, you know, so.
Okay.
I think that, that's the first step for it, we, we gotta get that figured out before we figure out what we can build and where we're gonna build it, so.
Right.
I think everybody's committed to doing something out there, so.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to pay bills?
Morning.
Motion to pay?
Morning.
Morning.
Second way, Dan?
Keep that.
And the veteran, the registered D, you need your motion on that and.
I just saw the group.
Aye.
Aye.
The veterans, no, the veterans service office and, yeah, yeah.
Anything else that you got, Dan?
I think the sheriff and Jim, maybe Sheriff and Jim.
He was here.
Must've got a call or something.
Oh, he was here?
He was here because I called him to come in early, and then when Pat showed up, he was here. I guess Cindy has a broken nose.
Do we, do we know what happened, did she get people there?
No, it was someone like, possibly she hit a car, a parked car.
Oh.
That's just what I got from Jessica. Anyway, she's got a broken nose.
Yeah, that'd be hitting a parked car, you know, stop, stop.
This is this morning, we're going in for that seven thirty block, see? The road right in front of here.
Yeah, why, when I came, I was, I was still running, I'm not driving.
Really?
Yeah.
Then with the first block, I didn't see.
Yeah, I was over in this block, I could just see all the stuff sitting there, I saw a car on its side.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's there.
Did you want this chair to let him in?
No.
He wants to be close to it.
Be close to the door. I don't know what.
There he is.
Lana just called, we kind of appear.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So Pat said he was coming late and it was a wild morning. Just arguing with accident.
So sad.
Yeah, terrible.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You've got. Oh, all right. Full order currently at forty-nine inmates. Not much of a change over last week, and we've just been kind of steadily getting as many as we kick out of there. Our classroom is all ready to go for the, for the virtual court, we made an attempt to do it this morning, and had some issues with our, uh, remote being out of batteries or not having the correct kind of battery, it has a, doesn't just take like AAA batteries, it has a special kind of battery that it needs. And so we got one of those on order. We, it looks like we've, um, we're in the process of getting, uh, somebody hired, a female hired that's moving back to the area um, for our night shift for corrections. We've also had some applications coming in for some people looking for some part-time work as well. And I, it sounds like they haven't done a lot of, hired a lot of part-time staff in the corrections area. After the visit that we had with the jail administrator from Brookings, um, he had kinda talked about that it's something that they used to really, you know, loosen up their staff, um, help their staff out quite a bit, and I think we're gonna kind of use it in the same, the same kind of way. So if we can maybe even pull in some, some kids that are graduating from the area, that are maybe looking at law enforcement and things like that, to kind of get them in, and you know, even if they're there with us for, you know, five or six months, it can, it can significantly help us out, 'cause our, our staff has been there for a long time, and have always taken the brunt of it. Yeah, 'cause they're the ones always willing to come in no matter what, so. Uh, I went up yesterday and I, uh, collected the check from the coffee cup uh, in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seven cents. So, this is, is this the third year or the fourth year we've had that one?
At least the.
At least the third year.
At least third, I'm asking you, I'm asking for.
Twelve thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars by the period of time, isn't it?
Yeah.
Three thousand? Yeah, so, and I, I, I was sure to thank them over and over again, it's a pretty gracious thing that they, that they.
Is, is this the kind of thing where we, I mean, we talked about it before, I don't think we've done it, but get a picture, I've given you a check and put in the.
Yes, they have a, they have a big, one of those big cardboard checks, and they wrote it out, and, uh, I took a picture yesterday with about seven or eight of their staff members, probably from their different departments and stuff, because the, the check is, the check is the, um, culmination of all of the tips that they receive from all of those different departments inside of the coffee cup, all the restaurants, um, and things like that, and they, they, it's something that they've been doing, and they pool it all together, and. And put it together, and yeah, and they're, it was kind of a cool deal.
Wow, picture, that'd be great, for all three pictures, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's.
Cause there was a picture last year.
Yeah, and they, they took a picture and they, they sent it to me, so I have it, so I'll get that, I'll get that out.
I want them to do all three pictures, that's mine, I'm picking them up.
I mean, it's, they deserve to be thanked for what they do, and it makes, it ties to other people that copy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we mentioned before about, about that too, and, uh, if there's a patrol car going by the coffee cup, they should swing in and pop out of their fuel tank if it's needed.
Yeah, um, you know, the only thing that, talking to their, talking to the manager there, um, is, one thing that they would really like is just to get an idea of something that that money goes towards.
Sure.
So we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to put it towards something that we can, that we can just kind of say thank you to them, this is, you know, this was paid for by, by you, and, and this is how we utilize it, or.
It is with the dog, I think, really.
Yeah, yeah, so, and they thought that was a great idea, 'cause they were just, they just kind of, I think it's kind of one of those things where they just, you know, they put it in there, they like to know what it, what it goes towards, so. So we're gonna try to keep track of that.
They're picturing the, picturing the newspaper, that you said, Dennis, how that works, I see you just picturing the newspaper every other week, getting a check from somebody.
So, um, one other thing, um, we are, how do I put that? We are going to, uh, the nurse, the, the jail nurse has been talking with, um, Lewis Drug uh, about inmate billing for medications, um, and it was brought to her kind of attention from, from them that we should be, um, getting, getting both Lewis Drug and the hospital, the CDP, the hospital and the clinic, um, making them more aware of insurance that, that our inmates are having, um, so we've. James put together a, uh, medical request form, same kind of medical request form that they, that most other jails use as well. And in here, it authorizes us to transfer the, that medical information, um, and they, the inmate signs off on it, then we can release that information to, you know, the, uh, both the hospital and the, uh, the drugstore. And it just allows, it allows us to get their medical, um, insurance, whether they have medical insurance, Medicare, or Medicaid, so that those entities are billed first prior to, uh, land, excuse me, prior landing on our shoulders. So, uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at kind of going through that, that process.
And a lot of times CDP does do that, you know, we've had the thing where they'll send us the bill, but then, you know, their insurance paid this much.
Yeah, and I think where, where oftentimes didn't happen is with the medications, and then we would end up, we would end up taking down the costs of the medications.
One thing you look at too, when, when Shopco is our provider, we, we got a, a business off of Shopco for drugs that we had to buy, it was covered by any kind of insurance company, ten, fifteen percent or something like that.
Yeah, at the time, it was the cost of the prescription plus twelve dollars to fill.
Okay.
That was back in August two thousand fifteen, and then, uh.
That was Shopco, right?
Yeah.
So Lewis, I don't think, ever asked Lewis for anything like that, or not, but maybe he wasn't asked.
I, I will, I will talk with both, uh.
And, and CDP already give, you know, target the Medicaid rate, and they filed to target the insurance, it's supposed to be.
Yeah. Um, so that is that, uh, and then the only other thing that I have is we are looking at going down and pick up our, the Dodge Ram on Thursday uh, in Pier, the bumper arrived and the bumper got put on this week. And then, um, I was down there last week. And looked at the squad cars that the highway patrol has available. Um, one of the vehicles, one of the vehicles, uh, both of them are, are twenty-twelve Chevy Towels. One of them has a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles, and they valued it at about five thousand five hundred and seventy. The other one is at about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand miles, valued at about five thousand six hundred and seventy. Only real difference between the two is, one is the highway patrol tan, and the other one is silver. I tested all four or five vehicles, those, those are kind of the best and cheap ones. These are all vehicles that were driven by the command staff, so they've got a hundred and twenty thousand miles of, of, uh, pretty easy driving compared to what most other vehicles would get sitting out there. Uh, they all come with a cage with the lights, with the radio, with the radar. Um, so they'll come, they'll come pretty well, pretty well equipped. I guess I would estimate, from the time that it gets back here to putting it on the road, I'm gonna estimate, on the high end, that we maybe have to put somewhere between eight hundred, right around eight hundred dollars into it to get it on the road.
Seems like a hell of a deal, especially getting all that equipped.
Right, that's kind of how I felt about it, I said, I know, I know when we, we outdated a vehicle, it cost us more than that.
Yeah.
So.
Less money.
This is my opinion, I mean, they definitely wanna try one at least.
So, um.
Because we're buying two.
Yeah, I thought.
Running parts off one. I don't, I, you know, I put that out here, and they said if you're interested in both of them, you're more than welcome to.
Would you have a need for two or?
Yeah, I'm just.
You're trying to get these.
What it would end up doing if we had two is we would have a spare vehicle. So that if something ever went down.
For five thousand.
We wouldn't have to, we wouldn't be in a rush to have to, to do something, and we would have a, we would have a, you know, a a third vehicle in line if we ever needed it as far as transporting.
Let me see, if you lost a transmission, you can take that out of the, the uni, the other used one, and I mean, I don't.
I think they're good and. Yeah, I think they're good.
I agree, if you think that makes sense, yeah.
Well, yeah, 'cause who knows?
What do you think, Dennis?
Yeah, I was waiting for you to say that, but that was my initial gut feeling, too, is get them both. If, uh, if that empowerment needs to come back to the, uh, building here for staff use, and we can follow it back, but.
We got, we got the, uh.
Buy a decent golf cart to eat for, so.
Yeah, we got the, we got the cage in it, and they're utilizing that vehicle already, so, um, I think, I think we'll keep it. Like I said, we've started to, to increase the amount of transports that we're doing around town. Uh, ultimately, it just, it just makes things a lot easier, and we're not having to worry about adjusting appointment times and things like that, because we run out of vehicles to take them.
Can, can you put three people in backseat in the tow?
Um, we would probably have to look at getting, getting a different cage for one of those Towels. But, yeah, we definitely, it's, they're, those two thousand and twelve Towels are, you know, significantly bigger than like our Explorers are. Three in the back would be a little bit of a tough squeeze, three in the back of a Tahoe would work, would work pretty well. So.
You don't wanna spend your money, but to me, it seems like a good deal.
Well, he just, he has another check there, so.
David's.
Right, where are you?
Oh, yes.
I need that back too.
Oh, I'm just gonna file that one away. All right, so, yeah, and this is, this is the, the check from the claims associate for, uh, for the damaged vehicle. At seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Seven, seven, nine, three, sixty-eight cents.
Just pay water vehicles.
Yeah, a little extra.
Wouldn't this be a good time to declare those, um, those vehicles surplus, Tyler, and, uh, you know, get the process started to send them down the road?
Yeah, um, I would, I would think so, we have three of them. We have three of them back there, the one that was damaged in the accident, then we have two others. Uh, the one has a, um, from, from my understanding, the fix for that one is gonna be somewhere around fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars for a power steering pump that, that would need to be replaced on it. Um, and those, those, both, those, or all three of those vehicles are getting to be pretty high mileage, so.
These actually have last miles, but most of your vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, I don't know what that, what that process is, if we declare it for surplus, or, or we, um, try to salvage, try to salvage them out to a, to a salvage yard.
We'd have to declare it.
Is that what I have, okay, okay.
Anyway. So can you bring me the information on it?
Oh, three, yep, I will do that. So we can do that for next week? Okay.
So if you end up purchasing two of those. So if you could end up purchasing two of those and then you picked up a new truck.
Yeah, we're, well, we'll have to bring.
Two, three, four of us down there. I just wanted to see if there's a place like in Watcom, you can rent a, a car dolly and put one on a dolly and pull it behind the other one or something.
Well, isn't there, on the seventeenth and eighteenth, isn't there that?
You guys are.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, you have three guys down here, one vehicle, if you're over there.
There'll be three of you going.
Yeah, so we could bring one man, or two of them.
Two, yeah.
On March seventeenth.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we could, we could do that, I know, I know we had already planned to go down there on Thursday, um, so we could make up one, so we'll get one.
Yeah. We could pick up that one.
Get a two.
Yeah.
Don't you guys wanna do another road trip?
We could.
No.
The sun's shining up.
It is a long, it is a long drive.
Yeah.
Well.
Just wanna keep going the hills, but halfway there, like, okay.
So I'll put that on the agenda for next week to declare those, and then I'll have the, whatever they are for sure.
Yeah. Uh, so do I, do I need anything for, um, writing a check for those vehicles, for the two? Do I need to pay for them both at the same time when I go out there?
One, two, yeah.
Maybe motion to purchase those?
Yes.
That's a move. Motion by Tom, second by Fay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As long as Tyler is in the room, uh, Don, did a bill go to City Hall for the dispatching?
Yes, they did. It went for all three months, January, February, March.
Good, thanks, well, thanks.
And that is all I have today. Alright.
Wonderful, thanks Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you Tyler.
Thank you.
So just let me know.
They can't be those cars that have twice the, all that.
As a town, they're big. Two of them cost more than each car.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So why are we buying them, the decent work?
Yeah, we got a year or two on it. I'm making some time on it.
Because Tom's got, get out of here, you gotta go to a week. You gotta leave eleven thirty, right?
Yeah.
He's gotta leave a quarter after. Dom's got Tom to leave.
Yeah, check her out.
Kenrod? Only walk a mile?
Yeah.
Okay.
When you call.
Okay.
I bet he's gonna record that.
It's being recorded.
Yeah.
That's gonna record on the live stream to us.
Yeah, they could take it early. That guy is probably, we don't see him three hundred miles.
Oh. So you're getting your first shop? No, I got my first one, uh. Uh, I get my second one on the other.
Yeah, I need those too.
And after all, it's.
It's the second one.
After all, we have to call, yeah, I went to the B D, so.
Oh, really? Oh, you guys still love to see.
Yeah, we've got in there probably this week or next week.
How old are you?
Sixty-eight.
Okay.
Just.
Yes, yeah, this last.
Oh, yeah, I saw you.
Say what?
Oh, it was on.
Oh. I almost forgot that, I, oh, we were last time that were on, huh, too? She found one, the wine glass in the hand was the door open, huh?
Can't wait till they call and see.
No, you, I bet you, no, they already got this, we loaded up, I think they, they scheduled on the first part of the week, so maybe next week.
See, I'm on sixty-five, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, so you, you gotta be next week, yeah. You know what though, if you, if you want to, Ron Valley was doing, and they clearly said Ron Valley, they don't feel real, and then so does South Dakota, you can get Ron Valley.
I just assumed you were up there and then I was close, you know?
Yeah.
They're probably not sixty yet.
Well, I think, I can't remember, maybe theirs was just sixty-five, I don't know, I, I know it, probably was sixty-five and older.
You mean sixty?
No, I will be in May. I will.
Oh, you, you had that going on right now? Oh, wow, okay, wow.
Wow, you need to go? He's, he's got a, he's got a form. Yeah, oh, oh, yeah, you probably.
They say she needs to leave, yes, so.
Okay, the guy tell us this.
Yeah, yeah, we need.
They're all part of your corps there. Good, okay, take care Fay.
We can, we can check on mine.
Corner is at the back door, oh, no, one at the hospital.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, you got, we got.
We don't need to talk about it, we're just gonna get it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm not doing this on purpose.
No, no.
No, no.
Are you leaving Fay?
Yeah, I have to leave.
Okay.
I have a minute.
Have a good week.
See ya.
Uh, next time the agenda is.
Yeah, he's, was invited to come in early, but he's waiting for someone to.
Oh, okay.
So soon as he gets there, we're. Did you, it's almost been recorded here?
I'm sorry, what was that about, recording?
Jim, precautions.
Yeah?
We're waiting for him to bring us, someone's gonna come and record this conversation, they said, I need to be recorded right there on the livestream.
Oh, no. At, at this point, I don't think we have the capability of having an outside recording.
Oh, okay, I decided if you want, get a copy, then you can probably get a copy.
I don't think we're letting that go out.
Okay.
At this point, that, that's a J and Z, aren't you?
I guess, I guess you're not having.
Yeah, that's, that's fine too.
I understand completely.
I suppose Dennis is working on lunch right now, huh, what are you making for lunch today, Dennis?
I'm so busy processing food with you guys. I have to be boiling sandwiches.
I, I could drive out, pick some up to go.
You're on, we'll be sad.
Riverside pickup.
If you were Alan Schmidt, I'd have to make me some, like, wild rice soup, your pan.
Oh, that was so good, wasn't it?
Who, who makes that?
Alan Schmidt. Oh, my God. The best I've ever.
Get that pulled pork too, oh.
I didn't get any, I was too late.
Oh, were you, I was there like right after they started.
But the soup was awesome.
It was, it was so good.
You know, we get that stuff from, from pizza up there, that frozen stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Then he adds some more rice to it, how much of chicken, vegetables, all the same, I can just, this stuff.
Yeah, but Alan makes it from scratch, I wanted to tell you what. Most, I told him yesterday, if he makes, if he makes some, some, I'll drive off and buy some. Cause he usually makes it in a big.
Sure.
Big quantity, and I said, I'll, I'll come out and buy some from you now, I'm, I'm serious.
Well, I can cook something, I can, I'm here.
It's so good. Yeah, he was on his way.
We talked about the day they used to pie a lot of time from Shar.
Oh, sure.
And she sold you a cherry pie, big one, for this, like, ten bucks, you can't go to the store and buy the ingredients and make it for ten bucks, you know, just. I don't know how she did, of course, her crust was homemade.
Yeah, homemade crust was, was shortening or flour, everything.
Yeah, we had to go.
Has she, Shar's daughter died?
Yeah, she's unexpectedly apparently, yeah.
She was full of cancer.
Was that right, really?
Yes.
She's fairly young, she's early sixties?
Yeah.
Maybe sixty-five, I think she might have been the same age as Marilyn. No?
She was younger than, younger than me.
I think the same age.
I don't think she lived around her, did she?
No. She was beautiful.
But that was the last, good to face.
Yeah, you can go there and eat a lot of food for not much money.
Where is it at?
Chartered to pay a few with her for many, many years.
Morning, is Tom not here today?
We're here.
Oh, hi, Tom, you're the guy in East Park.
She was born in fifty-seven.
Yeah, hi, Tom, eighty-seven.
I was born fifty-six.
Uh, we're gonna record this if you don't mind?
Probably do.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I think it is recorded, isn't it?
Yep, she's recording right there.
Oh, okay, so we have, but we're, I think they have a deal where it's copyrighted, so you can't, we don't wanna copyright.
And the gentleman with you?
The. Deloree.
What was your first name again?
Rick.
Rick.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna do the same thing I did with Tom before, we ran time to history to start with and then discuss the problem at hand. In two thousand eight, the South Dakota legislature passed the law taxing farmland, House Bill one zero zero five, which went into effect in twenty ten. This law states that we should tax the agricultural land based on solar quality and productivity. The state would figure these hundred and sixty acres as set the value in relation to every other hundred and sixty acres. Each county will then set the number to multiply to that volume by to get the final figure to set taxation values as a mouth each hundred and sixty acres they're paying taxes. By law, there's said to be a minimum of eighty-five percent of either the valuation on what it was self or, or. Of what the state determined a hundred percent would be of the cost production. The then Roberts County Director of Equalization Assessor apparently did not adjust land values according to this new law. A previous county assessor split the county into neighborhoods, grouping them into townships and assessing value by townships. The assessor valued the property in the townships and assistant school district at a much lower value than ones in Rossell School District. Here's a map, you can see of the Roberts County. These counties were valued at sixty-seven percent, and these were valued at a hundred and much times at a hundred and twenty percent. This is the Rossell School District, this is the Assistant School District. This value was as much as fifty percent lower on one side of the road in the Assistant School District would be taxed seventeen hundred and fifty dollars per hundred and fifty acres for farmland. The other side of the road in the Rossell School District, a hundred and sixty acres with a club and solar quality and productivity would be taxed at thirty-five hundred. I actually had a farmer tell me he had two quarters, one in Rossell and one in Sistin, right across from his other road. And one was seventeen fifty and was thirty-five hundred, that's where I got that figure from. After ten years, the county got caught doing this, and the state required it to be corrected. According to a twenty-nine article in the Assistant Carrier, the mill levy in the entire county would reduce by twenty percent. For the entire county, what that means is, everybody in the Rossell School District in houses that were along lakes, not in town. The houses and towns paid twenty percent more in taxes than they should have because of this for ten years. This would amount to approximately four million dollars per year, over ten years, approximately forty million dollars was collected wrong by Roberts County. And the break was given to farm or land in the Assistant School District. Okay, now I believe that when the assessor done this, he did not take this on himself to do this. I believe he was told by the then county commissioners to do this, I believe he colluded with them to defraud the people of the state of, I mean, of the county of Roberts. Okay, now we got a real big issue happens, it's discovered, what do we do about it? Well, we went three years to adjust it. The law was wrote for ten, forty million was collected wrong, I know it's hard to figure that figure out. Anyway, so what do they do, you go three more years, okay, what is wrong with this three more years? What is, what is the value, total value of the county, what's that in relationship to state aid, how state aid is paid? Anybody know, anybody understand how state aid is paid? Nobody else? Tom, do you know how state aid is paid?
I can wait for you to, I'd rather have you tell me, Jim.
Well, I'm just curious, I made notes, I don't gotta go through a real library or somebody's, okay, here's how state aid is paid. They take the total amount of the county and they divide by the number of pupils and they pay state aid. If the value of the county is too low. The, if it's below eighty-five, which by state law it has to be, then more state aid is paid than legally can be collected. So Roberts County was assessing at sixty-six percent. So the Assistant School District was bringing in forty percent more state aid than it should have, but illegally allowed. Now this state aid, uh, is figured by the state now. So, the state caught them doing this, so they then gave them three more years to continue this practice. Knowing that they would pay state aid to Roberts County wrong during those three years. But obviously, the state of South Dakota wasn't paying Roberts County's Assistant School District wrong over those three years. So what do you think the, the state of South Dakota decided to do, as far as I can tell? According to, this happened up in Aberdeen in the county up there, okay? And they, according to the article in the Aberdeen green sheet, it says. School districts are unable to fund their budgets with property taxes alone. The state provides funding to make up the difference between what's collected by counties and property captured for education and what's needed to run public schools. A tax factor determined by the Department of Revenue for each county to prevent counties from purposely levying. Lower property taxes and shifting a higher funding burden to the state. But that would have went on for ten years, you got, if this Roberts County got caught at it. And the state then required them immediately that year to go into compliance by assessing that property that was, its value should be. So they would have colluded with the state to pay more state aid, I don't believe that happened. What I believe is, I believe the, the state went back and figured a formula. That if Roberts County was assessed properly, would pay state aid according to that formula, which is totally against the law, totally corrupt. So they conspired with Roberts County to allow this to go on for three more years, and instead of paying state aid properly. They went ahead and devised a formula, it was totally illegal, so they didn't have to pay that state aid to Roberts County. Now I tried to get a copy of why each county would have its own, uh. Formula for state aid, which is wrong, because it just figures the total value of the state aid divided by the number of students. divided by the number of students. That's it. Period. There's no formulas. Secondly, I, uh... I asked them to give me Roberts County's formula. The state mailed me back a letter after four certified letters requesting this and sent it to me. "You will no longer be... will we ever have any contact with you or answer any of your questions or do anything?" Okay? So now, I got the bright idea. Well, let's go ahead and quarter section of land I'm living on. Let's go ahead and appeal it. And take it down to here in front of the judge and let's subpoena when December and ask her. The judge would not allow me to subpoena when December, which is totally against the law. The judge would not allow me to ask any questions or have any information pertinent to anything but that quarter of land. She would not allow me to ask if state aid was paid and how it was paid and what went on. So she was a part of the collusion and they covered up also. So why am I getting at the state so hard? I believe that instead of Roberts County owing all this money to everybody back, I believe the state owes all this back to us. I believe the state colluded with Roberts County to defraud these people. Okay? We pretty much got the evidence to support it. Get it dug out. Okay, now... Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
I've been told.
Okay, pretty corrupt, right? Took both the state and the county and the assessor to do all this together to end up with this total millions and millions of dollars stolen. Okay? And it's still going on because this was three years implemented. So an axi, but there's no statutory limitation run out as far as criminal prosecution. Okay, until recently, the Roberts County assessor did not view non-adequate properties as aggressive. Oh, one other question. I'm gonna give you a list of questions that I'd like to answer from the state because they don't talk to me. Okay, one of them is, uh... Did... is there a special formula for each county and why? Okay? And what is the formula for Roberts County? Does that make sense? We should know that. That should be public knowledge, right? Now, did Roberts County try to claw back any of that twenty percent or four million dollars that was overpaid by state aid to Assistant School District? Did you ask that question? Did they try to get... pay any of that money back to the collecting illegal? Or did they just say, "Oh, you collected illegally. That's okay"? Okay, Roberts County went twenty-four years without assessing non-adequate properties. Okay? By state law, you have to assess properties every seven years. What is the... who is... how is this enforced? How does it... who requires a county to obey the law? The way that's done is the county has state aid withheld. You guys don't know that, do you? I don't feel like I can explain it at all. So that's what goes on. State aid is supposed to be withheld. Here's a history of property taxes in South Dakota. The tax freeze expired without a fix for the property tax system. Property values were raised to at least eighty-five percent of market and state monies were withheld from counties that did not achieve the statutory requirement or failed a coefficient dispersal ratio of less than thirty. Okay? So Roberts County went twenty-four years without assessing properties. What happens when you go twenty-four years without assessing properties? The high end goes up ten percent. The low end goes up ten percent. The low end, on a five thousand... on a fifty thousand dollar house, go five thousand. On a five thousand... five hundred thousand dollar house, we go fifty thousand. So what happens is you get a real dispersal in how properties are valued. The high ends get valued way less and the low end get valued not near as much less or even quicker. So now, we're supposed to have state aid taken away from us to fix that. Right? That's the state law. I just read it to you. Okay, now, I want to request that Roberts County ever have state aid removed to force Roberts County into compliance that they had to assess at eighty-five percent or not have a coefficient dispersal ratio of at least thirty. Ours is fifty. We were assessing land... we were assessing farmland at sixty-two percent in those counties according to this article from the state. We were assessing all properties at sixty-two percent according to Sherri's testimony at the trial I had. So why... why did not the state step in and force us to assess at eighty-five percent? By law, they should have. Did they withhold state aid and why not? Can you ask that question? Now, what... what is a coefficient dispersal ratio? A coefficient dispersal ratio is that high end is being assessed lower than it should be and low end higher than it should be. So there's only the next... Roberts County's coefficient dispersal ratio after twenty-four years was at fifty for about five years. There's not another county in the state that's over seventeen. Most of them are around eight to ten. There was a really good article in the Assistant Courier on this if you read it by, uh, ma'am. And she explained it really good. Okay. So Roberts County just kept doing this. And they didn't get any state withheld. So again, I say, the taxpayers of Roberts County, they were colluded out of all this money because this law wasn't enforced all these years. The state owes that money back to us, not Roberts County. Because you guys had been forced to obey the law by assessing property by withholding state aid, what would have happened? It would have been done. So it wasn't your fault that you broke the law and done that. It was the state of South Dakota. They at least owe half of it back to us, I feel. So we need to be, as a county, you guys need to be suing the state of South Dakota for allowing this law not to be forced. Understand what I'm saying? This is the big issue now, is who's gonna pay all this money back? Or who actually owes it? Who can we collect it from? Okay? I believe that only twenty-four years were not an accident. I believe that was done deliberately so we would get to these figures. The reason the thirty percent coefficient dispersal ratio is... is in play is because the state of South Dakota actually believes if you get over thirty percent, you're doing it deliberately. They believe you're actually assessing high-end properties low and low-end properties high. You can't get that figure by just doing the job right. But if you go out and assess properties somewhat accurately, you have to never get over thirty percent. Like I said, the next highest county is seventeen. And then most of them are around ten. That shows actually somebody maybe deliberately set a policy to go ahead and do this. What would make me kind of believe that? A gentleman was sitting in that chair the last time I was here, not the last time, one of the times I was here, said to me, "Oh, it's not what the value of your property is. It's how much you're paying taxes. And after you pay so much, you shouldn't have to pay anymore." What he meant was, all of us use the roads and the schools and every police department's the same. And you shouldn't put the burden on the high-end property owners any more than about so much. I believe that probably maybe the assessor even was told to assess like this. Reason I believe this, the former assessor said to me, "I bought houses and he was putting them on. I would pay twenty thousand for them. They had been on the tax rolls at fifty before. He would put them on at about forty." And I went to him. I said, "Why are you doing this?" and stuff. And well, he wouldn't tell me stuff. Then finally, after about five houses, he said to me, "You know, I will never again put one of your houses on the tax rolls and over what you pay for it like they told me to." This is what... and I tried to get ahold of the former assessor. He won't talk to me. He will not answer my emails. He will not have anything to do with me. I wonder if somebody didn't tell him that I was gonna ask him if he was told to do this. Okay, now, here's an example of how coefficient dispersal ratio works. If you had a home assessed at two hundred thousand dollars and it was assessed fifty percent less than it should be, the value of the taxes paid would be on a hundred thousand dollars. If you had a home that was worth fifty thousand dollars and was assessed at fifty percent higher than a hundred thousand dollars, both would pay the same amount of taxes, but the two hundred thousand dollar home would have paid paid four times less in taxes than it should have. You see how it works? This is... this was, I believe, not an accident, folks. I believe this was deliberate. Okay? Okay, now, Jim, we gotta go back to the state's school aid. When you're assessing all of the properties wrong, the school aid is wrong. So it wasn't just the farmland. So I believe the state figured the homes that were being assessed at sixty percent, that they went ahead and they made a formula for that like they were assessing at eighty-five also. That's why it's so important to get these figures. The other thing that's important is any emails between Roberts County and the state of South Dakota need to be kept. Make sure they don't erase any and make sure our assessor doesn't erase any. Okay? Because that will prove collusion if they devang them and said they could do all of this and get away with it. Okay? You see what I'm saying? Those emails absolutely cannot be destroyed. I requested those emails and they wrote back and said they will not give them to me. Because it's against the law.
Just want to point out one thing. You gave me a question, one half hour or twenty minutes in. We got ten minutes left. We have to wrap it up.
Well, I got a little more time, guys.
We have a lot of half hour. We have commitments outside that you can say that you have to do.
Tom, you have saved?
I have... I can't. I gotta go get my snack of Cobra Chops. I have to leave. My question for Jim, going to first falls, I didn't look at it. I think we're talking about two issues. One is equalization. One is state aid.
Well, no, Tom, a collusion to defraud.
Well, but...
That's the issue.
Let me ask you this. So if... if our... We have a tax review themselves, as I understand it. We cannot raise property taxes more than CPI or three percent or whatever. It's less. As a total. So if we're... if we're valued at sixty-five percent, let's say, we bring in a certain amount of tax dollars, we raise the valuation to eighty-five percent, the mill levy will have to go down course fine.
Right. But what you make is the people that are millionaires pay the taxes instead of the low.
Now, you're talking about equalization.
Yeah.
But state aid is not based on equalization.
No, state aid is based on a total value.
So the total... the total tax revenue that this county receives is not gonna change by changing the valuation.
No, it's gonna change who pays it.
No, not from six... not as a total of sixty-seven to eighty-five.
Yeah, it's gonna change who pays it.
No.
The guy in that two hundred thousand dollar house is owing it half of the guy in that fifty thousand.
That is equalization. That's not gonna change the total tax that the county gets either. It's just gonna change who pays it.
That's what I said.
But that's two different issues.
Well, that's not... that's the whole issue.
Well, I'm saying is that the state aid has no bearing on individual valuations.
Yes, it does. The state aid, if it's paid wrongly, Roberts County got four million more than it should have.
I'm not sure that's true.
Well, the quote is figured out. Twenty percent of the valuation's not...
I know, but...
Few houses out here are ten dollars.
If you raised their value and lowered the mill levy, they generate the same number of tax dollars.
No, because the total... total value of the county goes down twenty percent. That's how state aid is paid.
No, the total...
Yes, it is.
Value's gonna go down?
Yeah, if you assess it sixty percent, the value of the county... Let me read this to you.
I know that.
"The taxpayer inspired without a fix property values erased at least a market value of state monies withheld from counties that did not achieve this. Why was that done? Adjusted minimum assessment standards such as all property listed eighty-five percent of market value to stop counties from assessing deliberately low to get more state aid." That's right in what the law was written. This is the law.
I understand it. So let's...
Okay, so how am I wrong?
I'm not. I don't know what you're arguing. I'm kinda asking this as a question. Let's suppose we have one property in the whole county.
Yeah, what?
One property. That's all... one person owns all the property. Let's just say it's worth a million dollars.
Okay.
And we're... we're assessing it... we're valuing it at sixty percent.
Six hundred thousand.
Now, it's six hundred thousand. And let's just put a fictitious mill levy on it just for, let's say, fifteen. So that would generate...
Hundred fifty thousand?
No.
Fifteen thousand?
No, fifteen percent. Fifteen and six hundred thousand is gonna be a hundred thousand.
Okay, whatever it is.
A hundred thousand, okay. Now, let's take that same property and raise it to eighty-five percent. So now, we have eight hundred and fifty thousand. But I can't collect more than a hundred thousand, so I have to lower the mill levy to about twelve.
Right. But see, the low-end homes pay less than the high-end.
This has got one property.
Well, it's not one property.
No, but it's... it is. It is when you talk about state aid.
Tom, state aid is paid off of this figure. And it should have been paid off of that figure.
It's gonna be paid, but the...
The county got twenty percent more in state aid than it should have, Tom.
No.
That's why they passed the law saying they had to force them to go there and withhold state aid.
Let me finish now. So if we lower the mill levy, and it still generates a hundred thousand dollars.
For the county, but the county gets forty percent more, twenty percent more state aid.
No, don't they get it based on what...
No, they don't get it based on the mill levy. You get it based on the total valuation of the county.
What...
I just read it to you.
I know, but it's not gonna change the taxes in the county.
The what?
Not gonna change the...
Yes, it changed who pays it.
Yes, that's equalization.
Okay, and the state aid is paid by the total value of the county, Tom.
Yes.
Okay, and if you lower the value of the county in half, you collect twice as much state aid.
But... but if we... if we... so that's gonna read bad for... that means we got too much state aid.
Yeah, we had... we collected for ten years twenty percent more state aid. My question to the state is, did they deliberately allow us to do that and get a special formula and not pay it to us? Or did they pay it to us? And if they paid it to us, did they try to claw it back? Did they say we owed it? Why did they allow it to go on for three more years? In Aberdeen, they forced them to do it that first year. I talked to the assessor out in Aberdeen. They didn't allow them to go three more years like they did here. So state aid would have been paid at twenty percent. And then as it dropped, seven percent, fourteen percent, it should drop seven percent, seven percent more. They just went and devised a formula saying, "Oh, if Roberts County..." That's against the law. I even called the person ahead of education. She knew the figures coming over were crooked. She said to me, "I know the figures coming over are crooked, but by law, I have to use the figures that come over." See, the state is gonna really owe us a bunch of money. The state colluded with everybody here. Okay, now... okay, I'm gonna come back next week for half an hour. Put me down for half an hour next week. Because we got a real big issue to discuss on the ten percent.
We got five, yes.
Well, you wanna try and give me some more time? I still take half an hour.
It's eleven thirty.
I still take half an hour. Put me down for half an hour next week.
Same time?
Yep. When I heard the meeting's over, eleven fifteen. Is that what's over, Norma?
No.
Anyway, put me down for half an hour next week. Because we got a real big issue on the ten percent. The ten percent was where everybody should go to general. That's the big one. So far, we just showed the county deliberately colluding over a period of ten years to defraud. Now, we're gonna show them actually working the law really bad. Okay? So we'll be back next week for half an hour. We'll see you then. Thank you, guys. Don't be... don't really mean that. When I get done, you know, maybe we'll see you there. See you later. Good to see you, Tom. I had two shots, so...
I think mine today is...
So I'm safe. I didn't need to touch you. You know? Good to see you, guys.
Thank you.
You're here.
Thank you.
Most of you here. Most of you down.
All we done?
Second by Tom. All on favorite?
Aye.
Anything else?
This live stream was brought to you by Dakota Part of Thrift for all your needs. Countryside Yennis is delivering and memory care in Rosell where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners that reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching, and have a great day.